Good afternoon. We're going to get started today, July 21st, our Board of County Commissioners Workshop. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Thank you. Please be seated and silence any phones. And thank you all for being here. And we're going to get started with this budget item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are pleased to provide for your review today, the general fund budget, proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 22 to 23. And what you'll see are areas of significant increase, and they are, and those increases are really driven by just about three factors that Pete will, we'll talk about in more detail, but they are demand-driven services as a result of growth. An example of that would be emergency medical service and increase in the number of ambulance responses over the last several years with population growth. You will see, even though we won't be, we won't review in detail today, I don't believe, the sheriff's budget, his also driven by increase for, demand increase for service and a continuation of the 20 additional deputies that you allocated dollars for this year. So it's a continuation of those costs for next year. We have some very large capital maintenance projects in the budget for this next year. And Pete has worked hard to do more planning around the capital, capital maintenance budget. And we're trying to work that out for the next couple of years. But there's still some variables, variables yet to be sorted out. And then, of course, the last category is compensation. And as you know, we are, we're in competition with every other employer in the region. And we're very proud of the staff that we have. They are hardworking, competent, ethical people. And we want to make sure that we, we maintain that, that level of staffing. And then finally, the, you know, we have some new positions that we're asking for in some of the departments, which we'll, we'll cover. And again, based on demand, increased demand for services. Pete?
Thank you, Roger. And good afternoon, Commissioners. As Roger said, you know, I'm pleased to report that the county's in a, in a very good financial position. Our property tax funds are in good shape, and I expect them to look even better after the July 1st final property tax base assessment. So the agenda today, Commissioners, you've actually done quite a bit of legwork on this budget, and a lot of decisions have been made probably earlier this year than even in years past. So I'll go over briefly. We had a workshop in April where you, you told us kind of what, what assumptions we should operate under when we're developing this budget. You also had a February meeting where, workshop where you talked about transportation priorities and transportation projects. At just the meeting today, you made a lot of decisions on major maintenance items, on funding for road projects. So a lot of, a lot of decisions you have already made. And so this budget's in really good shape at this point in time. We'll review revenues and go over the preliminary tax base assessment June 1st, and then other revenues, impacts we're seeing to operating in capital budgets, current status of the general fund and unincorporated MSTU fund, which are two largest operating funds that aren't, that aren't business units. Talk some about capital projects specifically impacting the general fund, and then briefly some other projects. We're not going to get real in-depth into the capital improvement plan, plan to do that, a little bit, bit of more, a little bit more of that in August. But we'll briefly talk about some of the priorities. And then questions at the end that we will ask, do you agree with the status of the budget development up to this point? Is there anything else you'd like to see as we move into August and then the, the public hearings in September? You know, we hear a lot about inflation, a lot about supply chain issues, and a lot of the negatives that go along with that are increased costs. But I did want to start out with some of the positives that the county has experienced over the past year, a couple of years. Our revenues are coming in well. Property tax revenues are coming in well, and particularly sales tax, revenue sharing, electric franchise revenues. We're going to have a, a sales tax sharing year that's a record, the highest year we've ever had. The, the board, as I said, you've made a lot of decisions already up to this point through your previous workshops and meetings. We have fewer pandemic-related issues at this point. You know, we went through, we went through COVID-19, and then the, then the vaccinations in 2021. And we have a lot less pandemic-related issues that we're dealing with. And then, and another positive note, the county's received a significant amount of federal funds to help our local economy and our local residents throughout the pandemic. And the county and the board's made a lot of significant decisions, made quick decisions, and we've gotten that money out expeditiously. And just, just a few highlights from that, the CARES Act, which we received federal funds for. We, we provided individual assistance to 20,682 different folks for utilities assistance, 13,352 folks for rent and mortgage assistance, so a total of 28.4 million for that. Business assistance, both during the pandemic and then to rehire employees. We helped 1,232 businesses, 12.4 million dollars for that. And then, most recently, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, funds from the federal government. We've helped 2,315 households with primarily rent and some utilities assistance for 24.7 million dollars. So there's been a lot of funds going to individuals and, and businesses to help them throughout this. Briefly, the assumptions from April that the board adopted present the continuation budget, which we do every year, which is the cost to provide the exact same level of services as the previous year. And as Roger stated, that will, that will show an increase for, for the reasons that he stated, but it is the same service levels. Keep high priority projects on track, particularly our transportation projects, because with cost increases, we have to focus on our must-have projects and try and keep them on track as much as possible. And then keep up with growth. We're the ninth fastest-growing county in the entire United States. And with that comes growing service demand, which will require new positions, and as Roger stated, competitive pay. And you will see in this budget a number of new positions that we're requesting in order to keep up with demand for services. So property taxes are the, are the largest revenue, single revenue in the general fund and our property tax funds. And this is just the history. You've seen this before. Shows you the percentage increase in the tax base each year. We've finally surpassed levels that the property tax base leveled before the Great Recession. And this year's increase is 15.9%, the preliminary estimate on June 1st. And this, this is what that equates to. So you can see that each of the four main property tax funds ran a, a percentage increase in that 16% to 17% range, the attendant millages. And then this is the increase in revenues for next year in property taxes based on that assessment. So 55 million in the general fund, 5 million in unincorporated, and you can see the rest. You will see that the expenses in the general fund are going up by more than 55 million. And the balance of that to, to, to balance the general fund is, like I said, sales tax, revenue sharing, electric franchise fees. Current challenges, we're all in a higher inflation environment, both personally and businesses in the community, as well as the public sector. 8.6% annualized inflation through May. As I stated before, fast-growing area. We're growing at a 2.9% annually, ninth fastest-growing county in the U.S. Supply chain issues, which has impacted everybody, resulting in higher construction costs and operational impacts you've seen as agenda items come bi-weekly on your agenda. You can see a lot of, a lot of the things that we use chemicals for utilities, just vendor, vendor contracts. A lot of our vendor contracts have, have increased, and you're seeing that as we go along during the year. And then specific increases in fuel, energy, labor, certain commodities and construction materials. Just briefly, this recaps our, our, you know, we've always, we've been one of the fastest-growing counties in the U.S. for, for many years now, and that has not slowed down at all. And it's anticipated that we'll have, you know, a permanent population of nearly a million by 2030. When you factor in tourism, tourist season, we're, we're already there as far as impact, particularly on, on our road network. So as Roger alluded to, and I did before, we're asking for a number of positions in, in a few areas to keep up with just the incredible growth that we're experiencing. And the, the largest is in transportation, 17 positions. And most of that is related to drainage. We did a lot of, we, we did a lot of drainage work after Hurricane Irma. We don't want to slow down in that work. And we want to make sure that in our work orders, we don't get too far behind so that we don't have, so we can mitigate any kind of flooding issues that we experienced after Irma. So we have positions slated for drainage, for right-of-way permitting, based on all of the construction that is going on, and then also for slope mowing, so that we make sure that our signage along our roadways is, is easily viewable by motorists. Parks and Recreation, which is paid out of both of those funds. And that's primarily, that's for park, for park rangers, for our parks and preserves, and for maintenance, maintenance folks. EMS, the board, after fiscal year began, board approved 21 positions in EMS to keep up with growth in, in certain areas of the county, and also have a critical care unit. And those are being paid out of ARPA funds right now, American Rescue Plan. And we're also asking for additional four to be paid out of American Rescue Plan from the allocation that the board approved for communications dispatchers. In facilities and utilities, they're, they have apprenticeship programs where we hire graduates from, of high school, and we, they become county employees and go to trade school and learn the trades, whether it's HVAC, or electrical, or irrigation, plumbing. And then when they're not at the trade school, they're, they're working with senior people in facilities and utilities. And once they're done with, once they graduate trade school, they're full-time employees and are there as part of a succession plan as some of the folks in those departments start beginning to retire. And those are, those are the big, those are the big ones that, that we're requesting new positions. You've seen this before, and you have a copy in front of you. This is pretty busy. But I just want to, I want to point out what's driving the increase in the general fund, the, the primary drivers of the increase. One is, is the, is the sheriff's office. The sheriff is, sheriff's office is the largest single budget in the general fund, as it has been, and it always has been for many years. The sheriff's budget is about 42% of the general fund, and it remains at about 42% of the general fund. So we want to keep that percentage pretty, pretty close to that. Sheriff's budget increase is 25.7 million. As Roger stated, 20 of those, some of that is for new positions, the expansion of the narcotics unit, which is 20 deputies, also 10 court positions for new judges. And then the sheriff also has included his pay increases, mid-year pay increase, and a potential October 1st pay increase in his budget request. Public safety, that is primarily compensation adjustments from last year as we, as we approved the collective bargaining agreement with the EMS union. We did not adjust the public safety budget at that, at that time. We asked that department to absorb that increase, and we can't do that for another year. So that's in there, as well as their mid-year adjustment that commensurate with what the board approved on June 7th for other county Transfer for, for our transit department, we've been running a transit subsidy of the 12 to 13 million dollar range. Then the pandemic hit, and the county received 30 million dollars of funds through the Federal Transit Administration to, to help operate, as all transit authorities and agencies in the country did. So we operate, we are operating with that money and have been for a couple of years. That reduced the transit transfer and really helped out the rest of the general fund during the pandemic, as we tried to keep budgets as flat as possible. We knew that that subsidy would be going away, and we have about 4 million left of that. So we will be increasing the, the transit transfer, and, and that was a planned expenditure. Compensation adjustment, the board approved June 7th for all county employees. And then, as Roger stated, major maintenance. We have a lot of aging infrastructure, particularly downtown here. And a good portion of that increase is the repiping of the entire Justice Center complex, as well as chillers for the county administration building. So this is where the general fund stands at after June 1st. And I do, I do want to point out that, you know, in a 500, nearly 580 million dollar fund budget, $2 million deficit, so to speak, is your, your balance. That's 3/10 of 1%. And I expect that to go away after July 1st. So this is based on forecasts. I believe those forecasts will get better after July 1st. So you will not see that negative, but that's 3/10 of a percent right now. That'll be back in balance by July 1st. Your current undesignated reserves, you saw this morning after carryovers, final carryovers from the previous year. So we have adjusted reserves. And then each year, we request that the board spend a certain amount of, of excess reserves for one-time non-recurring items. Sheriff's capital is always a big one. We, we pay that out of excess reserves instead of requiring the sheriff to incorporate that into his operating budget. And most, there's three big items in there. One is vehicle replacement. Another is a replacement of their, or replacement and/or upgrade of their forensics software. And then also a payment each year for their digital radios that we did purchase upfront and finance that cost a couple of years ago. Clerk's financial software, this is the accounting software for the clerk. This is the second year and final year of the requests they're making for that, for that, that capital item. In a few minutes, I'll show you capital projects that we would like to spend out of excess reserves. And those are primarily related to departments that are doing projects where they don't have a dedicated funding source. And that's usually natural resources for flood mitigation and water quality projects. EMS, we have not built ambulance stations for a number of years. The last one, I think, was seven years ago. And they have a plan for about four new stations over the next four, three years. And then also some parks and recreation items. And then the DOT equipment, we'd request to spend out of excess reserves. That's the equipment that goes with those 17 positions that we've built into the budget. So your remaining reserves are at 95 million, which is just at that 17% target that the board has set.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions for Pete yet?
Unincorporated MSTU fund, you can see what, what departments are funded out of their part, regional parks are funded out of the general fund, and community parks out of the unincorporated MSTU. The big one there is, is a transfer for the Department of Transportation. So the drivers in this budget are school resource officers for the sheriff in the schools in the unincorporated area. There's four new SROs that the sheriff is going to hire for a combination of new schools and schools that have reached a level of student population where they need to have two SROs instead of one. The transfer for DOT, and that's a combination of those new positions, as well as vendor contracts, mowing contract, all of the vendor contracts that DOT have increased. And also there's been an increase in just basic materials and equipment that the transportation department And then the compensation adjustment approved at June 7th. Those are the main drivers. The unincorporated MSTU fund, right now, you see the revenues and expenses. Again, this is basically balanced for a fund that size. I expect by July 1st that that will be in the positive. And then you're going to have reserves after all that of about 9.4%, 10%. And that's a good reserve level in that fund.
Commissioner?
Yeah, just real quick. What, what, it is a good reserve level for that fund. What would we ever anticipate using the reserves incorporated MSTU for? I know, you know, kind of what we've always talked about with the general fund reserves, but what, what would we use the unincorporated MSTU reserves for?
It would likely, Commissioner, it'd likely either be board-directed if, if something the board wanted to do mid-year that we had not budgeted. And then also during, during emergencies, you know, you might use some of that. Probably not a great deal, but each fund, each fund has some expenses after, say, a hurricane. The largest is going to be in, in the solid waste fund. But all funds do have some expenses that they pay out of there until they get reimbursed. And then generally, you just have it in case, you know, you, you, you slow down, the economy slows down, and you might have to dip into that to, to, to keep your service levels for a few years until it, until it rebounded.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks.
In April, yeah.
Just to follow up on Christian, I'm curious, so in your opinion, obviously, the need for the general fund, the Sterilization of the Fund, the ones that are obviously, the curve falls, you know, and, 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 and,[1356.83]
You're correct, Commissioner. As, as at some point in a fund that size, as your expenses grow, and you're keep trying to keep the same percentage of reserves, they grow to a level where, just based on ba- past history, you don't have risks out there that would require you to carry that type of capacity. So absolutely, I think that's something the board should consider.
And, you know, this board has gone through. I mean, you know, the other thing that y'all went through is when you look back on page six for property values. I mean, this budget addressed a lot of issues that took place, you know, in taxable values. When you look at the negatives that were there, I mean, we all have this sheet indicating, you know, we went from a property value of 96 billion to 52 billion. You know, a lot of the things we do, and people say, there's a lot of money coming in. There's an old analogy, how I've been in this a little bit longer, is penalties spring both ways. This is the opportunity for us to take advantage and to obviously correct some of the things that we had to do. I guess when we, during the years of '07 through '13, you didn't have the funds to do certain things. Capital projects, raises, I know this county went through six or seven years of no raises whatsoever. So, you know, I, I have to recognize and let people know that this is an opportunity, when you have additional revenue, is to try to take advantage of not only just coming up with reserves, but looking at these big projects that may come across every one 10 years or 15 years and take advantage of them now. I think that's what we're doing in this budget. That's your statement?
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. Yes, sir.
Pete, you have a question?
Commissioner, Mike.
Whether it's the sheriff's office, or whether it's our other departments, we've made a concerted effort to bring people in, as you've noted here, make salary compensation adjustments, you know, to make sure we're competitive in the marketplace. My question is, maybe you're not the, the one to necessarily answer the whole thing, but are we finding the people that we need? You know, we, we've set up a, a program that we want to welcome people in, we're going to compensate them, but are we truly finding the people to fill those vacancies? Or does that number have to continue to change in order to bring people in? So I'm trying to see how scalable this thing is, based on our need and what we have to do. Because that ties, again, into the housing issue, which is more expensive, you know, and everything. So, just kind of curious what we're finding out as we go about these.
Commissioner, that, that's a conversation that we've had a lot over this last year. As you know, a few years ago, we made the conscious decision to become the local government employer of choice in the region, and I think we've been largely successful, so we're holding our own. Our turnover rate is tolerable at the moment, and in conversation with school superintendent and some others, I think we're, we're a little ahead of the game. But we have a fair number of people that will be retiring over the next couple of years that are in the drop program, and, you know, they're coming to the end of their, their employment time. And so it's employee, the employees that we want, the, you know, really talented, well-educated, skillful people are becoming more and more difficult to find. That's why we're ramping up our internship programs, and we're helping to pay for education and training. And so I would tell you, it's, we're doing okay, but we really have to be vigilant, because as we grow, we, we need more of those same kinds of employees. So we're watching it very closely, and if...
The internship program, to me, is probably the most interest. When you can expose people to something, and they may find that surpass you, maybe it's not, but it fills in that gap. You go from the classroom to the, to the ramp, to the, to the job and stuff. While you still have people that are very good at what they're doing before they retire and take advantage of intellectual resource, so...
Yes, sir.
Look to see that accrue.
Just a follow-up on that. I mean, I think, listen, I don't need to continue to reiterate this thing, but, you know, I had the unfortunate experience of telling employees for a year in and year out, you didn't get a raise. '07, '08, '09, '10, '11, '12, no, 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 no. And a lot of people in this room that were here during those times. You know, so it's a delicate thing to try to pay adequate compensation and overpay. And you walk that fine line, but we have a scarcity for people. We have a very competitive environment out there. And we have to be cognizant of, you know, we went through some really tough times when property values were off some 60%. And again, you know, as I tried to say before, you'd look at 2% for six years, it's 12% your salary we went up by. So, I mean, I look at this as an opportunity, and I always said, when we have revenue, we'll do what we can, and when we don't, you know, I watch people, and I sat across from two collective bargaining units and said, I don't have anything to give you. I'm sorry, I'm down in revenue, I don't have the money. And your staff has done that, and I just think it's a time for us to be proactive, because hiring a new person to the intern is so expensive. I mean, you know, I understand what it is to employ as many people as we do, and it is much more cost efficient, in my opinion, to be proactive instead of reactive. And it's always worked that way. And if it costs a few more dollars in the long run, you're going to save a lot more money. And, you know, we're going to look to you, Roger, to try to continue to guide us. There's opportunities, and this is different in my private sector companies. It's so different, because I don't have to be dependent on a revenue stream like we do and have the fluctuation. Because I could tell you during '07 to '13, I may have given small increases, but all the people that worked for me got raises. There wasn't a year they didn't get a raise. And that has an effect. That's how you get out of line with salaries. You know, again, why do we have to fix the police office? Why do we have to do the things we did? And I thought what we did at the last meeting was just a correction of really what took place during the '07 through '12 times. And there's a lot of people that benefited in this room, because people said, fine, we're willing to wait. So I think to your point, I, I think there's a lot of ways to do this, but, you know, if we run into some cloudy times in the future, I'm going to say the same thing, you need to work with me. But now that we're a little bit more flush, I think it's an opportunity to do what we can. I commend you, Pete, on what you've done. So I, I think it's just necessary for us to take care of the big projects, because it was interesting when you were going through the sheriff's budget, when you look at some of the earlier years, when we didn't have the increases, how just slowly every department grew, including us. So I just think that's, you need to look at this over a 15-year period of time. I mean, I know, you know, I just, it was painful during the times of just constant telling people, we don't have any increase at all to give people. And now's the time where I just think we make the adjustment, and we are the employer of choice, if we truly believe that.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, Commissioners, I, just two points I'd like to, to make in that conversation, please. First one is, we have about 29 different departments, and they are, they are all different, one from the next. We are in 29 different businesses, and we are a 2,600-person, you know, conglomerate of sorts. And that's, you know, the group that you, that you make policy for. And to the point that it's, it's different than the private sector, this is all those different departments with all those skill sets that are required. It is quite different than, than the, the private sector. We, we're not profit motivated, we're motivated by the need to provide service to, to the people in Lee County. In order to do that, we have to make sure that we've got the employees that, that, that will help us. The other point to, I think that we need to be cognizant of, and that is with the sheriff's office, and two things about that. One is, if people don't feel safe, the economy tanks. It just does. You can see that in different places around the country, where there's been crime in the streets, and that's something we don't have here. And for the last several years, in working with, you know, Sheriff Marcino, his words have, have always been to me, you tell me what you all need, that, you know, if you need, you know, if it's 2% or 3% or something less, he will make that work. And I tell you, he's, I tell you, he's been the easiest sheriff I've ever worked with when it comes to spending. And yes, it's a large increase this year, but the increases in his budget, they sure are even about employee recruiting and retaining, and, and, and the numbers of employees that he needs in order to keep us safe. And keeping us safe, you know, translates into so many good things, it's almost hard to name them all.
When I was talking about internships, Mike, when I would go, how's this sustainable? What are we bringing in that next group and train them? Because the intellectual capital, as you said, will start walking out the door, out of drop programs and retirements and stuff. Can't afford to lose that. So there's this flux of new people coming in, getting the right kind of training, and sustaining going forward. So I think we're all talking, saying the same thing.
Thank you.
Concerned with that.
Pete?
Okay, Commissioners, and we'll just briefly go through those capital items that I discussed that we're proposing out of excess reserves. And back in April, the board said, you know, if you, if you got, if you have to prioritize any projects, prioritize them, life safety projects, public safety projects first, transportation, of course, and, and then cer- and then certain projects where we're, we're building something that we're actually touching the public, providing customer service. So I think in all of these, you'll see that it fits under one of these priorities. As I stated before, in public safety, we have the primary projects there are ambulance stations, and they haven't been all located exactly yet, and I know that EMS is looking for, public safety is looking for certain land donations for, for some of these projects. But ambulance stations in, in four main areas, the south central area, which is Daniels area, State Road 80 area out east, Lakewood area in the southeast, and then a north station in Babcock area. You can see, these will all be designed the same, kind of have the same look, so that 96,000 is the design, and then the 1.5 is for construction. And we're looking to both, looking for potential land donations, as well as partnering potentially with some fire agencies on those. And these are the general areas we're looking at, some of the high-growth areas that we're experiencing right now. Parks and Recreation, Life and Safety, of course, shade is a, is a big thing in Florida, particularly with the potential for skin cancer. So the board last year put, put out a pretty ambitious plan to provide shade structures throughout our parks and playgrounds. We're well into that, and a couple more years of, of that revenue, or of that expense. Able Canal Pathway, which has been on the planning for a long time, and a good portion of this is through state grant funding, but that's going to be a, a six-mile path in Lehigh Acres, six-mile long, that will link Trailhead Park to Harnes Marsh ultimately. Boca Grand Pickleball Courts, they have tennis courts now that are requiring renovation, and pickleball's just a, just generating a lot more interest these days. So there's a plan to put, to convert those tennis courts into pickleball courts. And then Boat Ramp, Lavender's Landing on Pine Island. They, there are cottages there that we are not going to replace, they've outlived their useful life, so we're going to tear those down. We're going to renovate the employee warehouse out there for equipment, and then also increase a parking out there at that, at that boat ramp. And then this just gives you an idea of, of the, the extents of, of one of those projects, Able Canal Pathway, which will be a, a very nice pedestrian bicycle pathway. And then Natural Resources, this is a big one. Each year, we do a transfer for a combination of water quality and flood mitigation projects. You're all pretty familiar with these projects. Lakes Park, we've been working on a water quality project there for many years in different phases. Ten Mile Canal is new, that came out of the studies that we did after Hurricane Irma. And what we're looking for is both some design and also looking at, you know, what are things we can do out there to improve or to make sure that it doesn't flood as much without having to, you know, move all the docks and everything like that out there, if there's some, some improvements we can make. And then this is just one of the projects, an example, Deep Lagoon, that's a water quality project, that's going to be a, a filter marsh in the Gladiolus McGregor area, in one of our Conservation 2020 properties. So that 24 million of excess reserves, those are the projects that that's going toward. And the idea is that's to fund those projects this coming year, '22, '23, and then also for '23, '24, so we can actually get a couple of years ahead. And then the other priority projects, I just wanted to, to list them, you're, you're aware of them, the replumbing of the Justice Center. Those are 40-year-old pipes in there that you approved this morning, but, and the sheriff's capital items, I just, big Carlos Bridge replacement, we're expecting bids back on that in early August. Three Oaks Extension North, highest priority project, Corkscrew Road Phase Two, and the Alaco Road Connector, which you authorized a bond to help complete the funding for those two projects. Ortiz Avenue Widening from Colonial to MLK. The Emergency Operations Center Expansion, that's going to be using a combination of American Rescue Plan funds and a grant that we got within the state budget. Lehigh Acres Community Park Expansion, you approved the guaranteed maximum price for that expansion this morning. The Shade Structures, as I discussed, ambulance stations, flood mitigation, water quality projects, and then we're continuing on the Lehigh Constitutional Complex in the east part of the county that'll house the supervisor of elections, tax collector, government health, clerk at some point, and a, a small outpost for animal services at this point. So our upcoming workshops on August 2nd, we come back to set the maximum millage rates and look at a second draft of the budget after the July 1st final tax base assessment. Final draft budget on August 16th, if, if needed, and then the public hearing September 6th and 20th. And that's the end of the presentation, Commissioners, if there's any additional input.
Mr. Ray?
Couple of quick questions, just for clarity. So Pete, went up around 55 million with almost 16%. Divide one into the other, about 3.5 million is every 1%?
Yeah.
An increase? Okay. And the other, do you have a cost associated with the 5% COLAR I asked?
Yes, the general fund would be about $4 million. That's our estimate right now.
Okay. So if we, a little over 1% in property values, we'll be able to offset that?
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe one other, sales tax, what did you project? What's the budget have, 72?
72 million for sales tax. Expect potentially more than that this year, but I didn't, we're pretty aggressive in our revenue forecast, but didn't get...
It's coming in on top, uh, uh, still trending above, right?
Yeah, I don't have, don't have the latest month yet, but yes, it's...
As of last month?
Yeah, it's, it's been trending 25% of the previous year.
Okay. My questions?
Bill?
Good. Any other comments? Are you good?
Mr. Chair?
Roger, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, good job, Pete, and everyone. So this is a lot of information. We've been through much of it in, in subsequent, I mean, in previous workshops. And so, you know, you need a little time to absorb all of this again and, and think about it. But for today, we just need to know if you're in general agreement with what we've done so far, and is there anything else that you're interested in having us do analysis around or build into this budget, or any, any other, any other instructions that you, you might want to give us today?
I think my only comment is, we mentioned this morning, is that one of my priorities and stuff is housing. You know, how do we continue to house people, this workforce that's growing, and make it affordable, so we can sustain the business that we have and we continue to attract business? So, and again, I think that has to be broken up into three tranches, is the homeless, you know, housing that is affordable, and workforce housing, because I think each of them are a little bit different.
Yes, sir.
I'll just share, I mean, this is a, this is a really comprehensive piece of work here. You guys, we touch every, we touch just about every single aspect that I can think of, from public safety to parks to shade to even natural resources. We talk about where we're going to allocate these resources. It's, it's an impressive piece of work. And so, you know, on the first question, do you agree with the status of the budget development? I, I think you're heading in the right direction. You know, is there anything else you would like to see? The only thing that caught my eye, that I don't see a lot of in here, that I do believe we have funding sources other than the general fund, I mean, we do have our West Coast Inland Navigation District and, and some other funding sources, but we're going to, we're already one of the boater capitals of the world with, like, the most registered boats, I think, in the state of Florida. And I don't see anything on here about maybe another boat ramp somewhere. I don't know where that would be, but we've got a tremendously talented natural resources staff that could probably give us an idea. I'd, I'd love to see, just some way to also keep up with that growing boater population too, as we continue to expand, but, yeah.
Thank you.
I think there was a good point. So, I mean, I, maybe Pete, maybe you just identify the top five or six of our funding sources. I mean, now we have like 27, 93, I mean, I've heard all different numbers, but maybe just, you know, I think to Commissioner Hammond's point, just so we have some type of flexibility. You know, I, I do believe you did a great job, and to answer the same questions that Commissioner Hammond did, it covers everything that I want to see. And, you know, as someone that's been, this will be my '16 budget that I have gone through, you know, it's just an opportunity to try to do what you can while we do have some excess capacity. I do believe that, you know, we do have more than adequate reserves. I'd like us to really try to see us cap that at the 85 million. I think we've endured every catastrophe possible. I think I agree with Commissioner Hammond's point about, you know, there might be some opportunities for some ramps, and maybe some additional funds to offset that, I think that's good. I think you've covered everything possible and then some, and we've still come out with a millage rate that we don't have to touch and certainly have some flexibility. So, you know, I also am a big advocate, and I sound like a broken record, of making sure we separate salary adjustments and COLARs. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you have simplified it for me. In my mind, it's about a 1%, a little bit over 1%, will take care of the COLAR adjustment that we've asked for. So we could absorb that, and at least based on, you know, what I've seen in the budgets between preliminary and final, it's always been that number. And the higher the increase, the generally, the bigger the adjustment between June and July. So you've covered everything, and I appreciate it. I think you did a great job. Thanks, Roger, for your involvement. And listen, it's a lot easier as someone that employs a lot of people, key people here, as opposed to going out and getting new ones. So while we have the funds, I'm going to certainly be an advocate to make sure we do that COLAR adjustment as well.
Great, thank you. Great presentation, Pete, thank you for everything, you know. I think the one thing about this budget, it really touches every part of the community. You see all the different improvements, all the capital improvement projects, we're putting the reserves back in the community. I've been saying for years, it's great having the money in the bank, but we could be putting the money back in the community, creating jobs, creating a better environment for everything. And I want to touch a little bit on what Roger said. You know, we've seen a large increase to the sheriff's budget, and I'm saying, you know, been supportive with all that and everything, and we got to make sure we emphasize, you know, stay on the sheriff, make sure they keep that money on the books, boots in the ground, so it's actually a service back to the community. You see the first responders running, but that's obviously up to him where they put the money. But it happened at our last airport meeting, I think Commissioner Ray, I mean, it was our, we convened for authority two weeks ago about the pay increases at the airport. And I think, thank you for your support for that, making sure that we treat our employees the same. And over the decades of, when I worked at the airport, 2000, 2001, I could tell you then, back then, even to this day, it's really hard to see a lot of things don't change. You still have that Bob Ball mentality out there, where the cops, you have a million people a month coming through the airport, there were a million five in March alone. They still think of them not really as cops, they try to think of them as security, what's the word, customers, greeters, basically. They don't want to actually realize that they don't really have the, the actual police force that they should have out there before. Airport with over a million, half people coming through. There's drugs coming through there, there's kind of weapons coming through the airport, and a lot of crime coming through the airport, but they don't really ever want to emphasize or create that, it's something Bob Ball did, and hopefully now with Jeff, with Jeff being gone now and Ben there, hopefully Ben will recognize that and hopefully give the attention that's needed, that they actually have a police department there. Under criminal justice standards, they are a police department, they're not welcoming agents for the airport. It's great to be here in southwest Florida, but at the end of the day, there's a lot of crime coming through the airport. These guys here, somebody, he knows that, there's a lot of drugs coming in from South America, we don't have a drug dog at the airport. So there's a lot of things could be done out there, improved. If you want people to feel safe, like Roger said, people move here, they feel safe, but it starts at the airport. That's where their first contact is. And it looks great, the bathrooms are clean, we come in, it's lice new and everything, but at the end of the day, there's crime going on there. We've seen some crimes out there happen a lot of times. Most of them, you don't, aware of it, they keep it, you know, it's low-key, they don't tell anybody. But there's things happening, these guys know, because of the rental car stuff that's coming out from the airport. So it's great that our board's starting to recognize that. And thank you, Commissioner Ray, for recognizing that with the merit paid and everything, that you actually recognize there's actually a law enforcement agency there, it's under criminal justice standards, that has a role to play there. They're just not welcoming security guards, small cops. So it's great to know, they need training, they need equipment, and so it's nice, and hopefully the new administration out there will recognize that and follow the port board's lead on that, lead on that. Thank you. Anything else on this budget? No? Okay.
Any other clarity you need, Roger?
Do you have anything else?
You have anything else?
No, just, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much for, for the workshop today. Thank you, please to Dave and the rest of the senior team, and everyone who has participated in the creation of this budget, the fiscal staff, all the department heads, and the folks within the departments have done a really great job again this year. Thank you for your leadership, we couldn't do this without you. So we appreciate the very clear direction that we've grown accustomed to getting from you. Each year, we do, as we go through this process, we try to give you a... We want to surprise you any one year with big spends, but please be thinking about it, and we'll probably have a slide at your next workshop that just kind of gives, we're going to try to foretell a little bit about the cost for flood mitigation projects that we've been talking about for quite a while. Right now, there's not much in the way of funding for those projects, they're going to be enormously expensive, as we have discussed in the past. We're doing some of that work, but the, these major projects that were recommended by the engineering study after Hurricane Irma will prove to be really very expensive. And the development and improvement of conservation lands will also be a, a very expensive proposition. So just things to think about, no decisions today, or even in this cycle, I suspect, but just kind of a heads up, and we'll, more, more of that to come. But in the meantime, thank you very much, we, we appreciate the work that you're doing with us, and we will, we'll tweak this a little bit for our next meeting.
Okay, your turn.
Your turn.